Good evening. I'm going to call the Town Council Committee of the Whole. Special meeting to order for January 16th at 6:32 PM. A roll call. All are present except for Counselor McBride, who reached out and said he had another meeting, and Counselor Parker, who also had another meeting. We're on to new business. The first item is the town clerk appointment, and this is a continued discussion. So where should we continue? I would like to notate for transparency that I have been contacted by a few interested applicants for the position of the town clerk. I was advised not to say their names. So one had left me a voicemail, and I have not called her back because we were in the middle of a process, so I didn't want to reach out to her and discuss it with her. So another one had messaged me, and I responded that I should not discuss, and that she should apply. Also, Counselor Borderline has stated, after our last discussion regarding the town clerk position, that she may apply. And then she called me again last week on Wednesday, and she discussed her interest in applying in detail, including that if she was not appointed, that she could primary the individual who was appointed. And my reply was, I had concerns regarding the position the council would be put in. And with that said, Counselor Borderline has reached out to the town manager to look into what her role may be in the process of filling out the, filling the vacancy for the town clerk's position, given that she is considering applying for the position. And for transparency, I will read from Attorney Cody's response to the town manager. Attorney Cody responded and said, "We recommend that she recuse herself." As you probably know, courts look at resolving conflicts in the basis of advancing the public trust in elected officials. The test is not whether it, the commissioner member's personal or financial interest, does reflect, but whether it might conflict. As a matter of policy, this prophylactic rule serves the salutary purposes of promoting public confidence in the fairness of the decision-making process, and preventing the public official from placing himself in a position where he might be tempted to breach the public trust bestowed upon him. Attorney Cody then cites cases, and then continues, "Ensure a member of the public body must be held to a high standard, and our Supreme Court has ruled that this standard can be achieved only by high application of the principles." Hence, the prohibition is against not only an actual conflict, but even an appearance of a conflict. "We believe these common law principles are reflected in Section 3.5.3 of the Charter, which says in relevant part, 'No elected or appointed official, member of any town, ABC, or town employee shall use his or her official position or office, or take or fail to take any action, or influence others to take or fail to take any action in a manner which he or she knows, or has reason to believe, may result in a personal or financial gain.'" "It is true that an actual conflict may not exist, and that a job description may be drafted around wholly objective criteria, but an ordinary member of the public may view with a raised eyebrow and perceive a legal appearance of a conflict in a situation where a person interested in holding a public office drafts the job description for that very office." A further dimension to this is that the appointing body may feel compromised. And with that, does Counselor Borderline want to respond at all?
Sure. I think it's interesting that, for the record, is the mic on? No, I guess there's going to be a delay. Are we on now? Can't tell. Okay. It was interesting that you're not able to name the other applicants. I did receive some of those phone calls as well. But if I was going to apply, then my name is disclosed. I reached out because I thought in all full fairness and transparency, because we don't know who is going to run up until the very last minute, we have to have a path. That's why I reached out to the town manager. If a counselor chose to want to run, since it's a Democratic seat, any Democrat can run. And so that's what I was hoping to find out, is what would that path be? What would it look like? But I find it still interesting that the other names can't be named, but mine is being named, versus stating, "A counselor, if a counselor was interested, then this would be the path." But that's fine. And I thank you for that.
Thank you. I named your name because you are the one interested that is on this council. So for transparency, as an elected official already on this council, I think the community has the right to know of who on here is interested in running for that position. Also, are you, will you be participating in the?
I'm participating until I actually put my application in, and if I choose to, then I'll recuse myself at that time. At this time, I have not submitted an application, so I'm not breaching anything. Thank you.
And do you believe that?
I haven't decided yes I'm doing it or not yet.
Do you believe that your position that you may, in the future, potentially primary this person that is appointed?
That's point of order. That's neither here nor there. If I choose to, or whoever chooses to, doesn't need to be disclosed tonight, so.
Well, your decision making will be based upon that potentially.
Yeah. Well, I think it's important to also note when I spoke to you that you stated that you were worried that I wouldn't get it as well, so.
I did not say that.
Yeah, so that you said, and then you're worried about what would happen after that. So again, at this time, I have not submitted an application. I'm not an active candidate. I was asking for the path in which one would, if they were an elected official. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Borderline, you do not have the floor.
I'll take the floor and say I feel very targeted.
You do not have the floor.
Thank you.
Counselor Borderline, you do not have the floor.
Thank you. Very much.
Would you please stop with your comments when you do not have the floor?
I have not seen any comments directed at you at all.
You are commenting. Thank you.
Free speech.
All right, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. We're back from recess at we're back from recess at 6:51. I'm going to request that we postpone this discussion regarding the town clerk until next Tuesday. That would be the 23rd.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
Why are we postponing it?
I think it would be prudent to postpone until potentially you decide if you're applying or not.
If I have not put my application in, by this point, I doubt I'm applying. I asked, for full transparency, I asked, there was a chance I may put my application in. I was asking what the path was. I knew exactly the date that it was going up. If I haven't put it in by now, a simple resume and a cover letter. And I know, unfortunately, I can't even get on a committee up here, so I don't think that I'd get a clerk's position. That's it. So the open seat would be in two years to run, if someone wanted to run.
And you've clearly shown interest and questioned it, and you are not denying that you aren't.
I didn't put an application.
I just don't think it's prudent to go forward at this time, so I would like to see if there is support to postpone this until the 23rd.
Yes.
Do we need a vote, or do you need a motion, or a second, or how's that work?
John, I'll just postpone this, and we'll vote on it.
Yeah, I'll take a motion. Postpone until that be?
Postpone to the 23rd. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Um, one, two.
Madam Mayor.
Five to one to one. That passes. We are going to postpone.
I should have asked if it came to the point where it could have been included before the vote, but are we going to be within the guidelines for the appointing?
Yes, I think that's, if we can get the work done next Tuesday, the work. Thank you.
Just to report, it has been, it has been posted, so it is out there, so it's progressing.
Thank you. We're going to move on to our goal setting for the 34th Town Council. And did you have the list?
Say again.
You were going to print out the list for me of? Thank you. All right, so for tonight's goal-setting exercise, we're going to basically replace the existing outstanding items list, and to better focus on the goals of this council, and the objective is to have 10 to 15 goals with 20 as the absolute out limit kind of thing. So the process tonight will be, counselors will call out their goals, and we'll take turns going around the table to list their goals, and they will be placed on the electronic whiteboard. Mr. Burt is going to write them, and he's going to manage the whiteboard. We will go through each item on the list to see if a majority support the item, and those with majority support will be circled for further consideration. We'll then take a break, and a brief recess, and Mr. Burt will print the individual sheets showing the list. Counselors will then circle the 10 goals that they most agree with on the printout, and we'll once again take a break, and we'll tally the scores, basically, of who, which ones are the highest priority. And then we'll have a list of our top 10 goals. And that, depending on how the numbers come out, we may expand that to a larger amount. So.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
Is that something that's typed up that we can read, just so we understand how the process? Is that something that, we didn't get that?
No, I'm telling you tonight.
Oh, we got it tonight, okay.
Yeah, I'm explaining it right now, how it's going to work.
Yeah, because it would have been great to have that ideally ahead of time, and it almost.
That's not a point of clarification. That's not a point of clarification. Thank you.
May I raise my hand to be recognized, please?
Um, yes.
Okay, thank you. I feel that, you know, for postponing that, I feel like we should postpone this. We don't have a full council here, and they're going to be boxed out of putting their ideas on. That's my first concern, for full open seat and transparency. This is on a non-meeting night, and other people have other commitments. Mine happened to cancel. That's the only reason I was able to share, show. We weren't asked for the date, and if it fit in our schedule, we were given the date. And therefore, it does cause a bit of concern, because there's two other councils, and there's possibly going to be three counselors that were not present tonight. My other question is, the other things that are up, open agenda items, what will happen to those?
Are you asking me directly?
Or whoever can answer, the town manager, or what, I mean, what's the new rule?
When I read this, I just stated that this will replace our open agenda items.
Yeah, see, I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that, and that's something that we're getting tonight. We weren't given this ahead of time. We weren't told this, or at least I was not told this. It's not in our packet, so it's like a rule that's being made up, and eliminating everything else that's on there, which is extremely unfair, untransparent, and undiplomatic. And so if, so then to put other things on, you'd have to put a referral in to add them. Is that the way we're going to do it?
Are you asking me directly?
Well, who else would answer the question? Since you made up the rule, right? Or did the town manager, whoever made the new rule?
If they, if there were, after our top priorities were listed, and more referrals came in, they would fit at the bottom of the list, but would not be in our priorities.
They would not be in our priorities. That's, I'm concerned that there's not a full transparent group of councils here, and I think us do not represent the whole body. We're elected at large, and I think we should be making these decisions when everybody can participate, because I think it is a big deal. Leaving it open like this, that was not written, and I wonder if other counselors may have canceled plans if that was going to be the new plan and new rule that they were presented with the night of showing up. Because it wasn't in the packet. It would have been great to know that ahead of time. So I, I asked for a copy of that. Can I get a copy of that, so I can have that in front of me to understand, to read? I don't even have that, to make sure I'm understanding. That's why I'm asking for clarifying questions.
We're going to go one step through this, one step at a time. I don't think it's too complicated. We're going to put things on the board.
I just, again, think it's not transparent. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's diplomatic or democratic. And I have major concerns that we're boxing out other counselors, and only picking 10 of the top 10 that everyone has to agree on. I think it should be more of a working session, where we talk about what things, and see if there are some similarities first. This process of eliminating and having to get votes on something to get it up there, and eliminating other things on there, like our state senator now is, you know, budget openness on the computer, which is on there, is now going to be eliminated if no one brings that up. I just think that's, I just feel it's very targeted and not fair. Again, if this was the plan, it should have been submitted. Open government, open transparency. The voting public doesn't even know that this was going to be the plan for tonight. It was a talking meeting, that's what I thought. Information gathering, not elimination. So that's a concern.
Thank you. Counselor Rusk.
I'd like to move forward with my, what I brought with. So my.
We're going to go around the table, and we're going to, we're all going to list something, yes. Thank you.
So we don't have a chance to talk about the process?
Hold on, Madam Mayor. I, when I read the, when it was, when it said in our agenda packet, goal-setting for the 34th Town Council, I interpreted that to be less open-ended. I was not aware of any other process, but I am totally fine with what a majority of the council wants to do, and I am perfectly fine with this process of getting goals and guiding us as we address the needs of the towns we were elected to do.
Thank you.
Is there a process where we should recess?
Your point of order?
Counselor Borderline does not have the floor.
That is correct. Counselor Borderline, you do not have the floor.
Thank you. Clarifying question?
Clarifying question?
Yep. Should we contact or take a recess and contact other counselors to make them aware? As Counselor Gieske said, he was not aware either. I was not aware. Unless you guys were aware of this process tonight, you feel comfortable. I think we should let them know that that, you know, if they want to zoom in, now's your chance, because it's only going to be top 10, to be fair.
I believe Counselor McBride has submitted his in writing. Is that correct?
Yes, he submitted 12 items for his list, and understood that they'd be whittled down. He's going to try to join in during the process, once his other meeting's over via Zoom.
Thank you.
Point of clarification?
We're going to be moving on.
That's fine, because he's not aware that we're going to 10.
We will be moving on.
He's not aware. That's not fair.
Counselor Borderline, if you continue to talk when you do not have the floor, we will continue to take recesses. I will do it all night.
Maybe that will stall time and allow McBride to get here. That's a good idea.
You do not have the floor. Again, you do not have the floor.
I ask for us to be fair.
You do not have the floor. So we will go around the room, and we will list our goals, some of the items that we would like to have as goals. Counselor Merritt, do you have a goal that you would like?
I have.
And can you move your microphone? Can you move your microphone down so we can hear you? Thank you.
Yes, I have some very simple.
We're just going to go one at a time, so you list one of your goals. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to, and it could be, put my first goal to rest right away, is to bring up the, our departments up to capacity, and if they're not, find out why they're not up to capacity. Why are people leaving? Are we in competition for wages for all departments?
So you're, let me ask you, so your first, one of your priorities is to bring the departments up to capacity, is that correct?
Yes, and if they are, then that puts that goal to an end. If not, then find out why we're not up to capacity. Is it the wage issue?
All right. We can't debate on these or discuss them, but we're just going to throw what our.
I understand, but these are some points that I understand have been floating around.
Okay. Mr. Burt has that up on the board. So then, Counselor Borderline, do you have a goal?
Do we have to go down the order? Can we just raise our hand when we're ready to throw our idea in? Wouldn't that be easier?
No, we're going to go, we're going to go down the order, and we're going to keep going around.
So the first thing, my first question is, for full transparency, I really don't agree with this process. That's first. It wasn't in the agenda, was not given, didn't know what we were doing today. Second, I think we should have a list of the open agenda items up.
Can we pause for a moment? Counselor Gieske, can you do the timer, please? Thank you.
Second, I think we should have a list up there, if the town manager could put up what's on outstanding agenda items, so that we have that to work off of as well. Could you just name off what's on there?
I'll have to pull it up. We can add it on at the end if they're not covered.
I would just like it up there to see why we're processing, because I think it is, some of those people made the effort to put them up there, and those should be up as a part of the discussion.
You want me to pull up the latest agenda?
Why wouldn't we?
Continue, Counselor Borderline.
I'll wait for those to go up. Thank you. You can hit the, you can hit the switch. I'll talk again. So if I knew we were going to be eliminating these, maybe one would have changed their opinion or items that they would have put on their lists, but that, again, was not disclosed, discussed. The write-up that John Burt gave the mayor tonight was not something that we all had prior to the meeting. So definitely puts a change in the menu. I guess the first thing I'd like to put up there is the Board of Ed Non-Lotzing Fund to be discussed. And we're just going one at a time here, just one at a time. Thank you.
Counselor Pacino.
I'd like to see if we can try to find a resolution to downtown Mystic Park.
Counselor Rusk.
I'd like to determine what plan we have or to sell town-owned properties. Plan for selling or use of town-owned properties.
Do you want it left to just use, or do you want it selling slash use?
Selling slash use, please. I am, flooding and weather-related solutions and resiliency. Counselor Jones.
I will put the new requirements from the state of Connecticut on having a Veterans Services Director.
Counselor Gieske.
Mine was, I wanted to look at the grant coordinator position that was talked in the last council. It is currently a standing and gending item, but I would like it to be a priority. I know the mayor supported that. It was Counselor McBride's original proposal, and then it was supported by myself and Counsel Frank.
Thank you. Yes?
Can we pull up one of Mr. McBride's, Counselor McBride's now, so we're still doing it in order?
Establish a stormwater authority.
Thank you, ma'am.
Counselor Merritt, do you have another goal?
Just a thought about bringing approved projects to an end. Either eliminating them from the list, or taking them one at a time without priority, and getting them off the list.
So the outstanding agenda list?
Correct, outstanding agenda. If they're not necessary, take them off.
Well, just to explain tonight, I believe we're going to come up with new priorities, so that can help replace that list. Okay? Thank you. Counselor Borderline.
I also have climate, obviously, on my list as well. I did send an email to John Burt, and it also went to our climate, new resiliency manager, about signage and lack of signage in our town that's flooding. I sent that out right after the meeting. John, can you send that to all the counselors? Or I can just forward it under a BCC if you want me to, however you want me to send it. But that's an action that we can take now as a council, and I, you know, we have, because our areas are flooding more, we need to get our signage up to date immediately.
So are you saying, is it called flooding signage?
Climate change signage, it's, there's all different types. I sent a whole spread with a whole example of signs to John and the resiliency manager after our climate meeting. And under that same climate note, I have resiliency standards and building code protocols that we need to maybe look at in certain areas. But we need more emergency alert signs. Folks that are not used to flooding in certain areas, especially in our tourist areas, need signage.
Thank you.
That's one.
Counselor Pacino.
Unfortunately, I'm drawing a blank. I had all written down.
Okay.
Didn't bring it.
You have nothing?
The ones I did have have been set already.
Okay.
I would look at, Counselor Rusk.
The open agenda, you want to take a look at that?
Yeah.
I think it's up on there. John, where's the open agenda? I would like to look at parks in District 4. Parks on the west side. Specifically District 4, but yes, indeed 4. But yes, west side.
What's that?
What's that?
The west side. The districts 2 and 3 are probably well-covered.
All right, I'll take my turn and I would like to put down work on affordable housing. Counselor Jones.
Short-term rental registration process.
Counselor Gieske.
I have it written down. Oh, similar to Counsel Bordaline's signage, but not directly. Although I do like the climate change idea that she mentioned. But like, especially in high-density areas, it has been brought to my attention that there is difficulty to see some certain signage driving at night, especially if they are off to the far side of the road and not in the visibility of headlights or in the visibility of a streetlight. So vision of signage in town.
Street signage visibility?
Yeah, thank you. Perfect. That was excellent.
We're wayfinding. It's called wayfinding.
Oh, and then the second and third items David, Counsel McBride listed have already been taken. I'll go on to, well, actually, I have served next three. Four, wow, you've already covered second through fifth. Set up a committee totally focused on expansion development in Groton. I think, I have to find his notes on Zachary. Looking at, could we expand commercial airline access at the airport? Could we look at the downtown, so just a variety of, a little bit more. It's probably something the EDC could do.
But he just want, so basically a development expansion for Groton.
Right.
Because that could be other things as well. Okay. Counselor Merritt?
Just about everything I was thinking of has been said, other than the signage should start with permanent signage warnings. And then as the flooding occurs, this road is closed per se, and go on from there. And that will come in.
Put your microphone down, please, because people can't hear you.
That would come in through the Safety Committee. The formation of the somatics of this issue could, could come from the Public Safety Committee.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Bordaline.
I believe that still falls under the earlier part, though.
Counselor Bordaline.
Yeah. No, I agree with you, Counsel Merritt. The email that I sent to John has all these, all the signs and hopefully he'll send that out to you guys to see, but I think it covers a lot of that. I have something here about RFPs and making sure that we're looking at ways to have affordable housing, but in our RFP, looking for, you know, mixed-income housing and in ways that we're writing our RFP as a goal. I did look that up and a lot of the RFP writing is usually driven by goals of the council to the economic development when you're putting out an RFP to have mixed-income housing. That's what I have here. Should I just keep going with a couple and then I can be done?
No, no, we're going to keep going around.
Okay.
Counselor Pacino.
Well, Counselor Jacobe had one. It was ATP ordinance. I don't know if that was run to ground or not.
We started pulling up information, but nothing further has happened, so it's still out there.
Okay.
Counselor Rusk.
So I also had affordable housing pocket neighborhoods for the RFP process. So that's kind of tagging off that. And economic development in downtown Groton. So I don't know if that tags off the Development Expansion Committee.
I think that was part of the intent.
Of the Development Expansion Committee. I don't know if it needs to be a committee as much as we need to look into how do we promote downtown Groton.
Do you want it as a separate thing, downtown Groton promotion? That's also something I could, you could discuss or refer to the EDC.
I feel like that's all kind of one that Development Expansion Committee. Actually, you know what? I don't want to speak for, for the other councilors. So I'm going to say economic development.
Promotion.
Promotion for downtown Groton area. Thank you.
Right, because I had on mine, actually, the same type of thing, attract development incentives.
Revitalization.
Yeah. I also have, which one do I want to put up next? I would like to make sure that we complete Sutton Park. Counselor Jones.
I have SB Butler.
Does that go under empty school properties? I think that would fall under empty school properties.
Yeah, sure.
Do you have any more? Do you have anything else other than that one?
Oh, I had.
It's already up there.
It's not up there. We have, we don't have the community center up there. That's sort of sitting out to what to do with the community center. Come to some kind of decision on it.
Counselor Gieske.
There were some issues this fall regarding potential water quality in Knowack and it really hurt the oyster industry. So I would actually like to look into the Knowack infrastructure. We haven't really had a reflection of the council. Or we just kind of, it kind of just, the water quality improved and just kind of went away. But just kind of looking back on, you know, what could be done to prevent measures like that from happening again.
And just, you know, our infrastructure, literal, physical, is not involved in it.
Okay. I needed a broad term. I was like, Knowack.
Point of information for, to answer him, and I don't know if it's a.
We can't get into the details of what happened.
No, it's not really details, but it came from another source outside of the town of Groton.
Okay.
So I, that may not raise that to the top of the list, per se.
Okay. Do you have an item?
I'm just in line with.
Do you want the next David one?
Oh, I'm sorry, David. Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, development of a long-term 10-year consolidated cash flow model, which has been out there.
Counselor Merritt, did you have another one?
Not really. Just I'm in line with a lot of the others that are, went up there. And housing is certainly a priority, but there are other things associated with housing that we have to look at as we work on that.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Bordaline.
I have something here. Work with Board of Ed and Athletic Task Force, Parks and Rec to establish a joint agreement about athletic fields. We still haven't, there's been nothing done yet to enhance the quality of high school athletics to date in the way of the fields.
Thank you. Counselor Pacino.
I'm going to steal one from before. This was formerly Counselor Franco's. Neighborhood parks and playgrounds, but I'd be, I'd like to be a little bit more specific and talk about one or two pocket parks in District 4.
All right, that's up there. Yep.
District 4 was up there?
Yep.
But yes, District 4.
I got enough.
Okay. Counselor Rusk.
Finalize the plan for the fire training facility behind the annex.
All right. I would have, I have bridges, bridges and culverts. And bringing our infrastructure up to sound working water kind of thing, however you want to state that. Bridges and culverts is just fine, to be honest with you. Counselor Jones.
We had, I had before, Town Staff Pay Study, but does that fit into?
That's going to be on the agenda already for next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
Please, next meeting.
Then I would. This topic, because I don't know how to quite redo this, but a review of town open space. And what should our goals be on that? Open space review, yep.
Counselor Gieske.
Complete the solar array project that we had discussed, started discussion on at the transfer station.
It's actually already slated for an upcoming agenda, but, I mean, it's completed. I mean, it's fine.
Yeah, just put it.
Are you all set, Merritt? Counselor Merritt? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, one more time.
David.
David, yeah.
Yes.
Counselor McBride.
Rules should be modified to allow for more productive and efficient meetings, like, things like consent agendas. So streamlining of rules. Does that seem reasonable for title?
Okay. Counselor Merritt, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm about done. I just going along with the open space review and we have to start thinking of the grand list, as always, as opposed to open space. And I'd kind of like to see a, a summation of the 2016 Plan for Conservation and Development from that department. And I'd like to see it in language that I could understand. I have a quote here from the paper, "A sense of place should be enhanced for a certain neighborhood." Explain that to me. That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
So how do you want it titled?
Just that, I'd like to see the plan of 2016 from conservation and development. Have they worked on it? Is it set in place as it's going to be? Have they updated it?
I think they're working on a new update.
The next one has been worked on, yeah. It's not, it's still early, very early in the process.
In, in language that the layman could understand.
How about just an update on the POCD process from the Planning Department? Would that be? And we could throw that out.
Whatever they have in mind.
Counselor Bordaline.
Yeah, so some towns have an initiative to help eliminate, you know, make sure everyone has fair drinking water throughout the district, let it be, no matter how old your home is. And so there's initiatives with the state that towns can partner with where you can help give folks funding or grants to help take out lead in the water if they have lead piping. I think that's a public health concern. It affects children overwhelmingly with developmental disabilities. So looking at ways that we can help our residents, you know, really, and the town to move towards not just the allowable levels of lead, but as lead-free as we can. Because not everybody is as of yet.
Ensure clean, safe slash safe drinking water for homes. Is that good enough?
What did you say?
Ensure clean and safe drinking water for homes and then referencing lead.
I would think lead is the big one because I think that's the one with the state initiative that's been helping the most. It's a lead, there was a lead initiative. I think New London may be doing it and a few other towns, but I'm not 100%.
Counselor Pacino.
I'm just reading here that former Counselor Jacobe had an update on cannabis. I don't know if we ran that to ground.
I think we decided cannabis.
Yeah.
We decided that, all right.
That was, that was decided.
It's an old.
It is an old one.
Okay.
It is old. Okay.
Okay.
I think I'm at my limit.
All right. Counselor Rusk. You're good? I have, I think one of my, the goals, I think, and I don't know if it so much accounts a goal as a town goal, maybe, is to have more community recreational events for the community to participate in. I know we've passed some things in the past few years, but maybe just waiting for them to come on, online. But the community has been really asking for events. Counselor Jones.
This will be my last one. In light of this week's, last week's storm, taking a look at if our resiliency report, this was probably way beyond what was in that resiliency report. So just a comparison or looking at our climate resiliency in light of the recent storm that we had that caused the huge amount of flooding in Mystic.
That's, I think that's one of them that I had was flooding weather solutions and resiliency. That was the first item that I had mentioned. Are you different than that or?
Well, it's, it's reviewing the report in line of, like, you're writing the correct report. That's my.
Review Mystic resilience.
Mystic report.
Point of clarification on that one? Is that, is it, are we referencing the same report that we just saw at the, and that's got to be, if I understood my question, then, point of, point of information? Didn't we have to have our remarks in by a certain date? I just worry that if we put it as an agenda item, we might not. Didn't she want something because they have?
But she can still come to discuss with you.
I thought she'd have everything by February.
Yeah, the report won't change. That doesn't mean the council can't do more things on top of that.
All right, perfect. That's good to know.
I just want to see if the recommendations fit to what we had as a result of the storm.
I'm just wondering, because the next step is to like, sort of, okay, things and then put our top priorities. So I wasn't sure if the flooding weather solutions and resiliency is, goes with the same thing. I'm just asking, do you think it's the same thing or different?
I think it's different. I want.
Okay. That's specific report just for Mystic.
Yeah, matching that report to.
Gotcha.
Reality.
All right.
It's really, I think.
And the report's the key part.
The report's the key part, yeah. We're going to come up with a whole bunch of, you know, recommendations.
Okay.
Now we have a real reality.
Just want to understand. Thank you. Counselor Gieske.
I am all set.
You're all set?
Everybody has spoken mine and I've spoken the ones that my other fellow counselors can get.
All right, thank you.
And then for, his next one is already covered with the joint, with the joint agreement between Board of Ed and Parks and Rec for athletic facilities. But the next one would be fair and equitable council representation on all committees.
You're all set, Counsel Merritt, or do you have something?
No, not really. It's just that I just go through the list and with bear in mind that the budget is around the corner.
Right.
That would be the priority.
Right. Counselor Bordaline.
Do you want me to just read one at this point or just read what I have left? Or do you want to come back? One by one, that's fine.
Does anybody have anything other than Counsel Bordaline? Do you have things left?
I don't.
I have one thing.
Okay. Counselor Rusk, are you all set?
All set.
Jones?
All set.
Okay.
He can go.
Go ahead. Counselor Pacino.
Christmas street decorations.
Very good.
We have a lot of people.
Holiday decorations.
Heard a lot of people complaining about that. People want to have a lot of pride in their town.
Can I? Can we amend that to holiday? I believe it says Christmas. It's really tiny from here, but.
Yeah, holiday would probably be better.
Holiday decorations.
Holiday street decorations. Thank you.
Counselor Bordaline.
I just want to say that was a good one. I've heard some stuff about that and I can agree with that. So that's awesome. Let me just make sure. I had something with the Mystic parking. My thing was to look into, not enhancing the parking at this time as we get there, maybe, but the first step would be to bring in some form of public transportation that drops off on the Stonington and the Groton side because currently there's no public transportation to go to Mystic. If you're from Groton and the center of Groton, you can't get to downtown Mystic.
I think that would fall under the broader Mystic parking because then you look at all the ideas.
Yeah, if you could just add in there, public transportation, if you want to add it on to that. Because that's a huge part of that. That's not always being discussed. It's parking literal sense, meaning spaces, garages, meters, but we need a way for people to get into Mystic. Let's see here. What else do I have? I apologize. I did some of my notes when I was sitting in my car. On my phone tab here. Single, single referral support requirements such as only additional counselor is required to advance a referral. I think that should be a priority of our council, that only one counselor needs to send that. We are all elected at large and my reason for putting that on is we were asked to bring our opinions forward and we should be able to do such in a streamlined fashion. I guess Counselor McBride put the one where I think all counselors, since there's nine seats on standing committee, that all nine counselors should have a seat at the table of some form, but they have the right to refuse the seat as well, but it should be offered up by the mayor. That's, I went over the Board of Ed athletic task force. Add second, add a second public comment to occur each month. That was something I put out a long time ago. Folks are very interested in it. It never came to the table. I think it, my reason for doing this would be that it would take the pressure off waiting and allow the community to not have to have the buildup stress of waiting and allow for our meetings to run more smoothly as well. And I think I have one more. Oh, yeah. A complete legal review associated with the revision of the property use TOPE 2021 document, since we've never really gotten one of those yet, with some rigor, and which was applied in the 2023 draft at the property use committee. A lot of folks want to see some of that move forward. I have the non-lapse that I did. I also would like it to be a priority, since it was something I was really passionate about putting forward, were the solar receptacles and completing that project around town and making it a priority to make sure that we have trash and recycling around. And I think that's all I have. The climate stuff was already addressed. I think that's it for now.
Thank you.
Oh, the Andre Baumgartner referral of, you know, the open agenda, whatever he had on there.
Budget transparency.
Yeah, where he had, where it was open online.
Menstruation products?
No, I said budget.
He dropped that off.
Open budget.
Budget.
That is open on, where you can click and open, expand the PDFs online.
The word on the referral list, John, is open budget data portal.
Correct. Thank you.
Does Counselor McBride have anything else?
Two more. Develop a block, a backup plan for someone to assume my position in my absence, unless I'm truly incapacitated, that would be my, just my, yeah, I'd do that. But I'll put it on there.
Succession plan.
Succession planning? Is it succession planning, or is it if you're not able to attend a meeting?
That would just fall within my purview anyways. I think it's if I'm truly incapacitated, or really, what it's going to be is if I was, if I was being replaced. It's pretty much a succession planning, I would think.
You could take it in lots of different ways.
Yeah.
Did you have anything else?
Oh, and then one other. Establish a not-for-profit to begin fundraising for the communities, communities that are, that could be part of community center decisions, but.
Say that one more time. I didn't hear.
Establish a nonprofit or something of the sort to begin fundraising donations for the future of the community center.
Just hit a return after the, yeah, after planning, just hit a return. Succession planning, return.
Nonprofit donation.
Yes.
I have, oh my goodness. Basically, I think I have. So I would like to have a NIPS discussion. I think it's a priority to get, figure out what we're going to do with the funding of next year and potentially have a buyback program. We have athletic fields. And then I think I'm okay right now.
Um, I have.
What was that?
Go ahead. Under the signage, in the thing that I sent to John, it wasn't just, like, water of the road. Some parts of River Road do not, and in Pearl Street, don't have them at all. We need to start establishing the signage in that, as well as showing the markers of how much water is on the ground, and also maybe putting those levels over by the bridges and underpasses, so that you can see the marker very visibly when it's at a certain level. So it's not just the yield signs, but it's also the water marker signs that a lot of areas didn't have them, because you didn't need them then. So adding that also on there as well, with that signage.
Remarque?
Oh, and also evacuation routes was the other thing on the thing I sent, making sure that we're, we need new evacuation plans, because roads are becoming impassable.
Right, under the signage one, or is that separate?
You know what? That might be actually a separate one, under climate change, having, you know, the, the markers for how much water's on, as well as evacuation plans. Folks are telling me that they just never have not been able to get out of their house both ways so frequently, and there's no plan in place or signage for an evacuation route.
Point of information?
Yes, Counselor Mayor?
I think that was part of my intentions of my remarks, was permanent signage to show where there could be a problem of flooding, and I don't know where those stakes came from. They've been there for years. I don't know if it was the town or the federal government that put them in, but if we're going to do something, we have to remove them and replace them with something that's appropriate to our needs now.
Okay. Thank you. I think we're all set. We got a bunch up there.
I just have a point of clarification.
What's that?
So now we have these up here. We're going to stream it down to 10, and then these are our priorities, but again, as we are elected, I'm concerned, and my question is, if another priority should take precedent, you're saying we then would put a referral in, but these that we pick would be the priority, and I think that's a little too stringent to do the people's work. I think if a new thing comes forward, no matter what's up here, if a new priority, that should take precedent. So I'm just concerned, will we lock ourselves into this? It's really not diplomatic in nature, so if you're saying our top 10 are what we're going to have, and then everything else that we put in as referral would fall under it, and these would be our priority, that's, to me, a concern.
Madam Mayor, please.
So I'm looking into that.
Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you. The way I view this is, and I understand Counselor Bordalain's concerns, but the way I'm viewing this is a roadmap for the council, understanding where a majority of the counselors stand, and giving us a guide as, you know, what is, you know, understanding, but ideas that, you know, may not be the top 10, 15, you know, whatever we decide later. That doesn't mean that they're not ideas. Anyone can make a referral at any time, and it can get to counselor support, and it's going to be open agenda items that are going to come to the council. So any idea that, you know, it may not be, this is just, the way I'm viewing this is, this is just giving us a roadmap on, you know, understanding where every counselor is, and because it is difficult, you know, when you make a referral to get, have an understanding of where a counselor is coming from, so a discussion like this, and, you know, having everybody's ideas come to the table, I think, is a good idea. And, you know, if something doesn't happen, anybody can make a referral at any time.
Thank you. I would have to, Counselor Rusk?
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay.
Can I ask two things for this list? One, for the parks on the west side, can you do a slash D4? And then, climate change signage. I know that we put it as two things, and if Counselor Bordalain wants to keep them separate, I'm not going to argue it, but I would vote for potentially one, but not both, and I think climate change emergency signage and the resilient, or the evacuation signage is kind of all one, in my mind, and I think it is very important, but I wouldn't want to not put it up there.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bordalain?
Yeah, the email that I sent, and I, like I said, John, are you able to send that, or do you want me to send it out?
I'll, I can send it.
Okay, yeah. It has, it has the evacuation as a signage. I did this all, whole thing. I did all the research on it. I think that's fair, put it all in one, so I can respect that. And again, though, the way that I'm understanding, or the way that it was put, and I appreciate Counselor Gajewski's view of it, and that's why I'm trying to get clarification, is that we pick these top 10 or 15, and then our other referrals, these are our priorities, but the other ones, when, when would those get triggered to an agenda?
Well, are you finished speaking?
That was my first question. I might ask, would you answer? I might rebuttal, since I slept.
Well, I was going to make a statement here, but you, so, so the listing here of all these ideas, I mean, I've come up, there are how many there? I don't even know, maybe over, probably close to 40 items listed here. These are the top ideas that we've all come up with. When we have a majority support for this, that will say that these are the ones that are going to take top priority to getting to our council, because majority of us agree we want to have these discussions. If there are items on this list that maybe have one or two people supporting it, if we bring it to the council, we may be able to bring that to the council at certain points, but it may not have the support of the full council. And with us only being able to, at times, fit three items on our agenda, and we still go till 11 o'clock at night, from 6:30 to 11, with three items on our agenda, we have got to put the priorities first, the things that we all think are important as a whole. That should be our priority. If there are referrals that come in later, and they are things that are not of urgent nature, they will go towards the bottom, and when one of these drop off, or a couple of these drop off, we'll move some things up into the agenda to take its place. But as a whole, this is a path forward for us to be able to get our work done, when we can only seem to accomplish three items on an agenda. And I will say that I went back and I looked at an agenda item from, like, I don't know, it was maybe four or five years ago, and literally, we had 13 items on the agenda, 13 items, and we used to get through these meetings, and it wasn't super late. We were out before 10 o'clock. So I would just say that where we are right now, we are at three. So we have to definitely make a priority list. And if there are referrals, as I will say again, if there are referrals that come in, they will go to the bottom, and when an opening comes up, they might be able to be bumped in, unless it is in urgent or emergency nature, that it has to take our, take our time. Thank you.
Can I finish my time?
Sure.
All right. So the thing is, is when a referral is sent in, we have to get two counselors to agree to it, and, you know, again, I've served with Counselor Franco for quite some time now. You, you know, I don't have a problem with agreeing to just about anybody's referral, because I think you're elected at large, and the time to vote it down is to let the council bring it before the body to deliberate. By agreeing to someone's referral doesn't mean you agree with it. You're agreeing to let the council bring it forward for discussion. So in response to Counselor Gajewski, yeah, it is kind of tough, but if you have questions about what the counselor is asking, you can email back that single counselor, or call them and say, hey, you know, I want to give this support, and what does it mean? So that's why, you know, but up here today, if we pick whatever, that's not, you know, the voice of every counselor necessarily. There could be some things up here that not one counselor put up, and so then we're moving forward with top 10 that really is not reflective of the whole body. That's my, my concern, but, you know, if this is the path that you're using today, well, then that's all we have. But I do encourage that, you know, counselors do look to seek, again, we're elected at large for the voice of the community, and I just hate to narrow that we're boxing ourselves in, and, you know, what, what should be the top priorities. And I guess the other question would be from the town manager, you know, what are some top priorities coming out of the town side that we should be looking towards, and is there anything in here that he may recommend that we should be looking at as well, since he's dealing with the town staff on a daily basis and we are not? So there might be some other things that we might be missing. So that's a question, I guess, for the town manager. Are there any priorities, since you're running the town, for, on our behalf, that you see, you know, that you think maybe we're missing, or that we could, should add, or, you know, I think it is important to hear your voice, because you're seeing the day-to-day that we're not?
I think the majority of the important ones have been listed, so now it depends on where it shakes out at. Yeah, but.
But this is also the town council's goals. The town manager has his goals, and he will, he shares those with us, and the town manager can put things on the agenda at any time that he sees fit, but this is us working as a council, trying to figure out our goals going forward. Counselor Pacino?
To use Counselor Gajewski's terminology, this being a roadmap, there's undoubtedly going to be detours in the next two years. With that said, this isn't set in stone. If something comes up that's more priority, it'll get put on the list, and I just, I don't see that having a list is, is an issue at all. I think this is a great list, and if something better comes along, and we want to bump it up to the top of the list, or get it in the next meeting, that's not a hard thing to do.
Correct. This is, I consider this a guiding map of what this council finds important in our goals. And as we go through these, we will now go through them one at a time, and we will say if we are in favor of it, and if we have, the majority of us are in favor of it, if there are five of us that say, yes, I like that, the town manager is going to circle it, or highlight it, or whatever you want to do to it. Mr. Burt, you can choose. Whatever you can figure out over there.
May I ask?
Yes.
We can only choose 10?
We're, no.
You can.
He is going to, we're going to go through these one at a time. When he finds out if the majority of us, each one individually, he's going to say, the first one, I can't even read it there, but let's just say, Board of Ed, non-lapsing fund, and five of us raises our hand, he is going to highlight it, circle it, whatever he's going to do over there. He's going to then print out that document of all the ones that we had a majority, five of us saying yes. We will want to work on that further. He's going to print it out, and then we're going to get it, and then we're going to select out of the highlighted ones or the circled ones, however he's going to be able to handle this. We are then going to choose our top 10 out of those highlighted ones.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Pacino?
And we're not necessarily going to know the rest. They just won't get put on the list as quickly as the top 10.
Correct.
Because once we hit, we eliminate the top 10 by taking care of them, we're going to come back to a new top 10.
Correct.
I would imagine.
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
A point of information.
Are you ready to move forward, Mr. Burt?
A point of information?
Yes.
So where will the other ones sit, then, in open agenda items?
If it has five people that say they're in favor, it's going to stay on the open agenda items. If it has less than five, it's just going to fall off for now, but we should actually, I will hold, I will hold the list of all of them, and, but it's basically, we have two very short years, and when we have a meeting, we can only get through three items at a time. We're not going to get through all this list.
So should we keep those other ones on the open agenda item in order, is what I'm saying, instead of falling them off? Because if they're truly respected priorities, one would want to keep them all, that they're visible, and it doesn't mean that we're going to get to them, but you could put, here's our top 15 above a line, and keep the open ones right below it.
I understand what you're saying, but I also think that if it's only one person supporting something, there's no need to keep it on the list at the time. Or if there's only two people. If you don't have five at this time, and thinking of how long it's going to, over the next two years, the amount of items we might be able to get through, it's, we're not going to see it anyway.
To get five out of six, that's asking a lot tonight, considering we have our whole council.
Sort of.
Or we have seven.
Sort of what we're trying to figure out.
Yeah, so I think if it has any support, it should stay on a, just an open list. I mean, that would be.
Well, I will keep a list. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I make a suggestion? Is it possible for the town manager to just make a copy of this document before he changes the highlights, so then he has two copies of it?
But even when it's highlighted, we will have the full list.
Oh, right, right.
Don't worry about that. It's okay.
Got it.
Okay. Town Manager Burt, are you ready to go through it? And are you circling? Are you highlighting? Are you putting a star? What are you going to do?
Let me have a second page. I'm going to go ahead and copy that list without notation, and then we'll have one clean, just so you can see later, and then we'll have one. I'm going to circle the ones that you have support for, and I'll just draw a line through the ones that you do not, unless you want me to erase them, since we'll have another original list.
I also thank you. Oh, my gosh, you didn't get rid of that, did you?
Just all hit panic.
There it is.
I do thank you for taking the time to learn all, how to use this board, and taking care of this for us. and taking care of this for us. Councillor Pacino?
Does this absolutely, this, what we're going to do next absolutely have to be done tonight? My thought is, if we all took that list home with us, and put them, and each of us put them in our priority that we'd like, we could submit them to you next week?
Yeah, but the next section does have to be done tonight. Because then there is another part after that.
Okay.
Councillor Bordelain?
I can agree with Councillor Pacino. I think it'd be great to take these. We've made some field work, be done for tonight. And then it would allow the other councillors to add something and be a part of the next step. I think it would be more effective. And that way, we can go home and process these and really narrow it down ourselves, too. Again, not compared to do it in this format tonight.
Are you ready?
So no response?
I don't have a response. I think I've responded plenty of times before about the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
So shall we go through this one at a time? The first one is bring departments up to capacity. Example, employees. Is that a priority?
What does that mean? Can you explain that?
Councillor Merritt had mentioned that, that he'd like the departments to be brought up to employment capacity and filled to, I guess, the employees.
What it calls for is the budget calls for a certain number of employees. And we may or may not have departments that are up to capacity. And so we need to do that. And we need to do it in a manner that's going to retain employees. And we should find out why we're not retaining employees.
Okay. So now, we can raise... I'm sorry, do you have some...
I would, because I had a similar thing to Councillor Merritt. And the way I worded it was town staff recruitment and retention. So if that...
I think it's sort of the same.
Yeah. So, okay. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that.
Correctly. All right, so what we're going to do here is basically, we'll raise our hands if we're in support of it. And if Mr. Burt sees five people, he is going to circle it or highlight it, or whatever he's going to do up there. So I will read these one at a time. And if you are supportive of them, raise your hand, okay?
And can I have some... For Councillor McBride, since he's provided his list, if his come up...
I would assume that he would raise his hand. Yes. Bring departments up to capacity. All right. Board of Ed Non-Lapsing Fund.
I'm sorry, can I get more information on that?
So, yeah.
Is that okay?
Sure.
So I made that as a referral, and then it got referred to the Board of Ed. And I believe it's been brought up at the Board of Ed again already. So it's something that's, eventually, they said they'd take up in the next term, is where it was left. And they were just looking into it. But it would have to be a Board of Ed and Town Council initiative. Some towns have done it, where money that's allocated or earmarked for Board of Ed, they ask for different raises each year. But what happens is, to be fiscally responsible and stuff, some towns feel like, oh, well, if we don't expend the money, then we... How can we ask for more the next year? Money that's already allocated to the Board of Ed would stay with the Board of Ed. So that way, they would be able to... Let's just say they got extra grants and other things. Because if I'm saying it correctly, John, the money that they don't use comes back to our general fund, is that correct?
Correct.
Right. So I, people believe if it was raised for Board of Ed, it should stay with Board of Ed. And the thought process is, we have deplorable fields in comparison to our neighbor towns in New England County. And having a way where they can hold some of that money and be fiscally responsible, then they could maybe use that money to enhance some of these CIP projects and things like that.
Thank you.
So if this, and with that question, that's already rolling to the mayor. If we don't do this, if they move it forward to us, it may still come to us anyway. So, because it's already in motion. Is that, that's my one question. If there's something up here that's already been referred, does that make sense?
If it's on the referral list at this moment? Or is it because the Board of Ed is working on it?
Right. We bounce it to Board of Ed, and then they're supposed to, in this term, look at it and then maybe bounce it back to us. So that's, that's the way it was sent last time.
Right. So I would assume that even if it's not picked, the Board of Ed's working on it. So they'll bring it back to us.
Right. But it would be a priority.
So it's already, it's already something that's being worked on.
John, you ever make that bold? The first one bold, instead of that circle? Is that an easy thing to do? That's probably an easier thing to do.
I don't like your art project, John.
Yeah. Take that up, and just make the ones that are good bold. And you can still put a line through the ones that don't pass. But just make that bold.
Just another quick suggestion. If you hit Enter in a space between each of them, it might help the circle look more separated, if you want.
We might push until there, I might have to reconfigure pages.
What about highlighting it?
Or make it red, or is it, do you have a color? Do you have a color?
The other option is cut and paste it onto a new document, and drop it, and build a new document with the ones that are selected.
John, the highlight button is, see, so on the side, you have the blue, like, cursor thing. I believe if you click the one below that, that is highlight. So, do you see the blue on the left? If you go on the left.
That's the color of the pen, if you're just writing. I could go up and under, you know, and circle it with pen to get a little more precise. So what that does is...
Can't you do the, use the pen with the cursor?
You can probably change the color.
There you go. Is there anybody online that might want to help, John?
You could just, John, you can also just cut it and drop it in a new document.
It's just, you know, if you're freestyling with this, it's just going to be a little...
I don't know about that.
I'd go up and write it, if we're going to do that.
I would do that little circle like you did.
Or just put a dot next to it.
Yeah, the little circle you did before.
Oh, you could do it by hand.
There you go. That's it! Perfect.
Then you can put a line through the ones that we don't want, and just do the circle with the ones we do want.
All right. So Board of Ed Non-Lapsing Fund. Downtown Mystic Parking.
Is that with the transportation? I can't see it.
Yes, it does.
Plan for selling, selling or using town properties.
Plan for selling.
That's the empty schools.
That's empty schools. Yeah.
Plan, yes.
Got that? The next one is flooding and weather-related resiliency. Next one is Connecticut Veterans Services Director, and that's actually a requirement.
This is required by law.
Yes, required.
It's a brand-new law.
We all have a town that has a services director.
Yep. Grant Coordinator Position. Stormwater Authority.
I'll give a, I want to know more, so.
Outstanding Priority List Review.
What was that one?
Outstanding Priority List.
Pretty much what we just did, didn't we?
Climate Change Emergency Signage. Evacuation.
That could go with the flooding and weather resiliency.
Oh, close.
I would think.
Yep. Okay.
All right. Parks on the West Side.
Do a save. Arizona.
He's trying to scroll down, that's all.
I guess a quick clarifying question. Parks meaning like playgrounds, or open fields, or dog parks and parks? What type of parks?
All kinds of parks.
Parks in general.
Whatever. Parks on the West Side.
So dog parks would fall under that, because that was something else I didn't add. Thank you.
All right. The next one is affordable housing. Short-term rental registration process. Street signage visibility.
Not really sure what I'm thinking.
That could go with the other two.
They would all kind of come together.
That's kind of steep, too, though.
So that was more broad. Yeah. It's fine, etc.
Yeah, that could go with the other two.
That's mine. So, no, no.
Development Expansion Committee.
I don't understand. Explanation?
That was, that was Councillor McBride's thing about, you know, expanding the airport.
You know, the light people at home can't hear you. Sorry.
That was Councillor McBride's thing about having a group that would look at business expansion, the airport, downtown Groton, that type of thing. But it does have some crossover with other stuff that's already...
Would it also be trying to draw in business?
Sure. That's also the EDC's goal.
But that's down here. That's down here.
EDC. I want to support it, but I just want to be able to explain it more. But I definitely think getting our airport, you know, usage more would be great.
So the next one is... So let's, Development Expansion Committee. And then RFPs. Look at mixed-income housing as a goal.
What'd you say, again?
RFPs, look at mixed-income housing as a goal. That's the RFP process.
We didn't actually vote on the Expansion Committee.
Yeah, we did.
We did? Oh, okay.
Is that requiring mixed-income housing in the RFP?
No, this is the RFP process.
We'll be bringing the first two, you know, first two, couple schools to you soon. And that's part of what we're going to discuss anyhow.
Yeah.
RFPs usually discussed when we...
You know, any direction you want to give, you know, for the committee that gets formed, if you proceed.
Councillor Bordelain?
It's a way of, like, we could at least have it as an agenda item to discuss to... We can say to town staff that we want this certain thing in our RFP that we're seeking. And making that kind of a goal is a way.
Can I piggyback on that? I feel like that can fall underneath what we said above with looking at how, what we want to do with town-owned properties. I feel like that kind of falls in that. So I don't not support this, but I feel like we've already addressed it.
If you guys want to add that language into that, I think that would be great.
I think anytime that we look at a town-owned property, that, what we want to do with it, that is something that we can definitely look at. Mixed-income housing.
I guess the concern is in the fact the town staff would go out to RFP, they'd come back with a developer.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but we can't debate here.
Well, I'm trying, I'm explaining why my...
No, I'm just saying.
No, no, no. If you want to...
It actually went to the council prior to even the committee being formed.
Right. I'm just saying, we could have a mindset. My referral is, my idea is a mindset that we would be trying to include that in RFP development, as a council, as a goal.
Okay.
That's what I'm asking.
So this is specifically regarding the RFPs, when you look at the mixed-income housing as a goal?
Correct. Yes. Which also helps the affordability, helps the whole housing market in having all of that affordable housing as a mixed income.
Okay.
And that area told planning staff we were going to have that discussion when we brought things to you anyhow, so.
Okay. So we're voting on it right now. The next one is an ATV ordinance.
And just, you know, that's, with what we've seen going on in different towns, where there's been street takeovers, that kind of thing, a few places have created these ordinance that if you do catch somebody, like, using an ATV or motorcycle, you could immediately, basically, take it and get rid of it. So they lose it. If they're caught and found guilty. So it makes it a little, it's a little deterrent, so.
Okay. ATV ordinance.
Bruce, was it your chance?
Nope.
Okay. That's good. Four.
There was only four?
I think that's all I saw. Can you redo it? Put your hands up a little higher, so I know.
ATV ordinance. Anybody? Okay. Nope. Economic Development Promotion for Downtown Groton.
Promotion? Is that what you said?
Economic Development Promotion for Downtown Groton.
Just an information on that. Don't we already have the TIF zones and all that already? Would that be overlapped, John?
That's a tool, not promoting.
Not a tool. Okay.
Is planning already doing this?
Well, part of it's the intent of the EDC, but you certainly focus more on that, so.
And I guess, I want to raise my hand for it, but I'm afraid that we're going to hire another person to study it. So would this be us doing it? Would that mean we'd be hiring somebody else to come in?
Well, you would start discussing, and you would decide what you want to do with that.
I mean, I think we have an economic development that's already doing that, so.
So Economic Development Promotion for Downtown Groton.
And so that's the economic, are economic people doing it?
Well, it's going to be up to the council to decide what they want to do.
I'm confused, but I'll just turn my hand up now.
So, yep.
Sutton Park Completion. Community-centered decision or discussion?
The word at the time was decision.
Yeah, it was, but it was, it's discussions. What are we going to, what are we going to do with it?
Okay.
Because the costs have gotten so high. So we need to figure out how we're going to proceed with that, or if we're going to proceed.
All right. Community-centered discussion. Knowing Infrastructure Water Quality Shellfish Industry. So I don't even know where we're at on this. That's the issue.
Basically, it was just an update of what happened, you know, what the town found. Because we didn't have a whole council discussion on it. That's where it was coming from. It didn't, it wasn't like, do we need to do something there? Just kind of more information on it.
There's nothing for the town to do at this point, but sort of the update.
So do we need that, then?
I don't know. For me, I don't know if that's a goal at this moment unless we, something else happens. And then I also think that would become an emergency, And then I also think that would become an emergency, that we could take it on as an emergency and urgent.
Believe me, if we think there's something we need to, we're going to be right here.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. This is not a hard list, so.
Okay.
All right, so knowing infrastructure, water quality, of course, we all want it, but is it a goal at the moment?
I don't think...
What was that?
The knowing infrastructure, water quality, shellfish industry. The situation with what was going on.
I mean, I support anything that's ongoing.
Are you raising your hand, or would you like to speak, Council Mayor?
I'd like to speak.
Go ahead.
I think that, first of all, knowing infrastructure, qual, the water quality, shellfish industry, we have a shellfish commission that makes decisions on this for the town of Groton. In particular, some of the issues that have come up are pointed in the direction of knowing, and they're working through their way on what caused all these issues. And I really think we should stick to our shellfish commission in Groton and let them forward ideas to us.
Right, and if, and if something happens in the future that elicits an issue, we can bring it to us. So that could become an urgent issue that we might have to discuss.
I don't, I don't really think it's a priority right now, they are working on it.
Right, thank you. So let's vote on the knowing infrastructure, water quality.
They have their own water department, and that, that sounds to me like it's a separation. Whoever brought that up, that could be a separation from the shellfish.
Okay. Long-term consolidated cash flow model for 10 years.
May I ask?
Go ahead.
Mr. Burt, could you explain what that means? Because I'm not familiar with.
Towards the bottom of his list. Development of a long-term, 10-plus-years cash flow model for the town, which the council can use and have updated when making financial decisions. It should take into consideration numerous assumptions for board of ed and town annual growth, proper maintenance levels for fund balance, future debt obligations, current and projected, projections for growth in the ground list, changes to future ECS amounts, as well as the projections from other state casino funds and federal funding. Most of those are really volatile, and it'd be a very inaccurate flow of cash flow.
So let's vote on it, long-term consolidated cash flow model. All right, the next one is board of ed and parks and rec agreement for use of fields.
And David did have that on his list.
Yep.
I don't know, sorry.
I would like to get an explanation of that.
Yeah, I meant sports fields, like that's, like working together to come up with a plan for the sports field.
No, this is a board of ed and parks and rec agreement for the use of sports fields.
One has control over some fields, one has control over others. So the request, the refer, the potential goal is to have them work together for scheduling. And Mark is in regular contact with them, but it is hard to tell.
And whose referral was this?
Uh, Council McBride.
Yeah, okay.
It's like two little kingdoms.
There's more than two. It's, it's more than just even the board of ed and parks and rec, there's the city parks and rec, there's the town parks and rec, there's a board of ed. And there are already something set up, sort of in place of how you go about getting these fields. So I don't know.
It's not to say they're siloed at all, you know?
No, they do currently work together, it's just...
I think part of his goal was ensuring that it is indeed working well together before spending more money on flooding fields, but I've talked a few times to Mark about it, he feels it's...
And the athletic field task force has also done a lot of work on this, and you can go back and watch the meetings about how this all works. There is, and Council Boarderlin was in those meetings as well to...
Which ones? I'm sorry, I missed the beginning part.
The athletic field task force and all, you know, the spreadsheet and how much usages of the fields. And they've done a lot of work in there to show the usage of these fields. So, so let's vote on this one, board of ed and parks and rec agreement for use of fields. Finalized fire training facility plan.
Is the structure behind the?
Behind the annex.
Behind the annex.
Uh, point of clarification to the town manager, are we in a standstill, or what do we need to find?
We're waiting to hear back from the fire departments.
Wouldn't it just be completed, I'm confused?
And, you know, about a year ago, year and a half, time flies, probably even a lot longer, there were some insurance questions, those have been resolved. And so we had asked a couple of the fire chiefs to look at, you know, do they want to proceed, we've not heard anything back, so.
Actually, I believe this one could actually go to the public safety committee, because that was on the public safety committee, and it had been taken up on the last term.
So that's what, thank you, that's what I was wondering, because I feel like, and it's no disrespect to the person who put it up there, I think this is already in the works, so.
It stalled.
It stalled, but is it something that we have to jumpstart, or is that, that's what I'm trying to understand?
We could.
I think it'd be outreach to them and pulling a meeting together.
Right, so I just, I don't, I mean, that's true, something that counts for doing.
If this doesn't, if this doesn't make up a priority, we could also put a C next to that, because I think that's a committee, it's a committee issue that maybe a committee could take up and work on it. But that's my opinion, but that's up to the council, and they choose the same thing.
I'm putting my hand up to put a C next to it.
Anybody? All right, let's, who would like to send it to committee?
Can we do that?
I would like to go put it to committee.
All right, let's put a C next to that one, we're going to send that one to committee.
I know this is a jump in the middle of what we're doing, but I think it's appropriate to get all the word from those involved, which is more than just us. And then we can always come back with a recommendation.
Okay.
It's going to involve some money.
Well, and I also think it moves it in a place where it's going to still get worked on, and what if someone selects that and we don't select something else? Because we're only saying, we're only picking 10 or 15, I guess, so it would make sense that there are some committee things in here, maybe we should think about that.
I agree.
Versus pulling them off.
I completely agree, I have that on my list as well.
So maybe we should go back through and think at it under that, that, those eyes. That way we can, you know, move them.
All right, let's get through the list, and let's just see if we have the, like, the five, you know, supportive, and then we can go back and we can list which ones we might want to put a C next to. How about that, Mr. Burt?
Whatever the council desires.
And you can erase your lines, do you know how to do that?
Do what?
Erase your lines, without just going to the back?
The ones you lined out, can you erase that?
I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
Okay, just curious, thank you. All right, so bridges and culverts review.
That could go to a committee as well, couldn't it? Safety committee, or roads, or whatever, would that fall under safety?
I think you're down a little farther.
Oops.
I think you, you're off, you moved your paper down.
Question for the town manager.
Council Mayor?
Isn't this already a subject that's reviewed by the state of Connecticut?
I think it was a review of bridges, well, not the, they don't do all the local ones, I don't believe.
Most of them we've...
Public Works monitors all, I mean, Public Works monitors.
Most of them we've had to go through the state anyways to get permission to even work on them.
Right.
So I don't see, it's kind of like the bridge affair. No matter what happens, there's somebody at the top that's going to make the decision over us.
All right.
Public Works does certainly give a update.
Uh, yeah. Give it a C?
For bridges and culverts? We don't have a committee that takes that. The C is for committees, we don't really have that.
You have the state of Connecticut that takes it.
I think bridges and culverts is more like, if we do the review, that we could have Mr. Hanover come in, give us an update, and potentially figure out and know, like, what's upcoming for our needs are, a needs assessment.
It'll come to us from the state, but we're going to have to provide the money, in other words.
I don't know if it's the state, because we have...
Yeah, I think they cover just about everything for bridges.
They might give us grants.
We have some local ones we do ourselves, but...
Yeah.
But they may give us grants, but we have, like, the culverts over and other ones.
Like Quaker Farm Road.
Yeah, exactly, things like that. Council Boarderlin?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I mean, I don't like, when I think of a goal, I think of something that you're like, yeah, we got, you know, this is going to be a big accomplishment. I see this more as like a direction thing that we give to the town manager, and he says to Mark Hanover, we'll make this an agenda item, and he'll come with a report. I would just hate for this to be something that we leave on, and then we don't put something else up, because it might not be a C, but I just wanted to ask the town manager, isn't that something that with direction, you just do anyway?
Let, in my mind, let's say you have your top, whatever your top 10 list, and then you have others that made, you know, generally the cut, but not there. Let's say something like that. Most of these big ones, you're not going to tackle more than one or two in one meeting, there'll be some opportunities for filler things, that's the kind of thing where, oh, I can throw that in, you know, so.
So should that go on another type of list if it doesn't get selected as a top? Because I think it's...
Well, that's what he's saying, is like, if it's not the top 10, if we, the five of us support it, it will stay on the list. If you don't have, like, there's something on here that doesn't have five supporters, and it's not going to make a committee, it's dropping off the list.
But even if it doesn't, I think he still has a responsibility to come back and update us on bridges, though.
No, well, I put on bridges and culverts, because I want to make sure our infrastructure is up to date, and if we need to put money aside and take care of them in the near future, we should. I think the infrastructure of our town is like, a huge priority. So bridges are a big priority of mine personally, I don't know how everybody else feels, but we have a lot of bridges that are in need of a lot of work, and they just keep popping up all over the place that need more work and more work. So I think there's a total of five at this moment that I, that I'm fully aware of that have either need repairs or some kind of issue with them.
Right, and I respect that, and I think after that meeting where we just had about the bridge, I had stated, can we get some information back? Because, you know, this came a year ago, and then we were just getting it. So I agree with that, but I kind of see that as normal functioning work of public works, not like, you know what I mean?
Just to mention, within the week I received it, the council received it on that bridge, so.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not saying, I, I was just saying that they came to us, the state didn't come to us for two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, so my, my thing is, is that this is, bridges is a public works thing that's ongoing, but I think that that should be something that they're reporting on to us regularly as part of the job.
There's also the North Stoneington Bridge.
Well, that's also a bridge, yeah. So I don't, whatever you guys want to do with it, I'll vote in favor of it for now.
How often does the public works director come to see us? Is it only by appointment, or by, because it's something he needs to?
Well, when there's a topic, yeah, that's how you have to do all agenda items, there should be a topic.
But shouldn't bridges just be a standing item?
Well, you're not going to, you're not going to put it on every agenda.
Not every agenda, but once a year, we should have an update on bridges, just to be...
All right, so we voted on it, there was five people that supported it.
Yeah.
There were five people that supported, let's move on to the next one.
Oh, there was five or not?
There was five.
You circled it.
You circled it. You circled it. You circled it. Town open space review goals. I'm not quite sure exactly.
So we have lots of discussions about, should we buy more land, should we not buy more land, what do we have, what's the percentage, where do we want to be? Every time we have a conversation on buying land, we get into a discussion about...
That's enough, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
It sounds like a budget item.
It's...
It's a goal of the council.
It's a goal of the council. How much land do you want?
Do we want to buy more, do we not want to buy more? It's, do we want to dispose? It's all part of the, or what we should decide about. The next one is solar array at the transfer station.
Is that, moving forward anyway.
The next one is streaming of council rules for efficiency. That's where I think Council McBride wanted to pass the consent calendar all as one.
By the way, Council McBride is on.
Oh, did he just arrive?
He arrived two minutes ago.
Thank you, so Council McBride arrived at 8:17.
I think we should update him on what, what's going on? Since it wasn't on the agenda.
Councilor Gajewski?
I think they should go to the rules committee.
What?
Let this, like, put an R instead of C, because we, put a C for committee. And then it's, and because we did that with, for the fire training facility, if it's, the rules committee is currently working on it, so.
Thank you. Council McBride?
R.
Council McBride, we put down a list of, I don't know, there's approximately 40 items here, we're currently going through. If we have support for at least five people that support it, we are circling, circling it, and if they don't have five support, we are crossing, putting a line through it. We also have the opportunity to send some of these to committee if we would like. But we're trying to figure out the goals for this council and what our priorities would be. So if you would like to participate, maybe you could put your hand up if you see something, or hear something that comes up on the list, okay? And we're going through them one at a time.
And Council McBride, all your items are on the list here. And then once we get through this stage, there'll be a next stage of picking out the priorities, I'll, we'll get a copy digitally.
Right.
Point of information?
Council Boarderlin?
Um, I think for full transparency, you should read the same thing that you read to us that wasn't in our packet, about what your plan and ruling was for tonight, so that Council McBride is on board?
Well, I just gave him a synopsis right there, very quickly.
If you could read it on the record, please?
Um, I'd rather not at this time, thank you.
How would he understand what the long-term plan of what you're doing is?
Because I will explain it at the next step.
But he's part of this step now, he should understand what we're doing. So I would just request that you read the small paragraph that would take two seconds that was not part of our...
Point of order.
Part of our...
Your point of order? This has been asked and answered, can we please move on?
I just don't understand why you wouldn't want to read it.
So Council McBride, if you are in favor of this, you can raise your hand.
So the next item is streaming of council rules for efficiency. It was just brought up that this should probably go to a committee, the rules committee it was requested. So is there a favor for this to go to the rules committee?
If you're asking me, Council McBride, I'm comfortable with that decision, thank you.
Thank you. So that will get a C. Ooh, look at the star. The next one is the plan of conservation development process update that Council Mayor was requesting an update from the, I guess, from the plan of conservation development. Is there anybody in favor of that? Council Boarderlin?
Isn't that something, again, I mean, not to be redundant, but I just think that some of these things are simple asks that we can just have on a separate list, and it, to have it take up as a priority, that's again, something that we should be getting as information. Asking about bridges, asking about conservation are simple things that any council should ask the town manager, hey, I'd like an update. That's how most government works.
And just, you know, I could, one, have John, you know, write out an update and email to everyone, but two, John's going to be coming for several items in the near future, and also while he's here, put an item on, so.
Okay.
That sounds good, just put a bug in his hand, have him bring it with him.
Okay, so is there any, does any, we're voting again on it, plan of conservation development process update.
Yeah, so if he wants it, I have to support him.
This, this is in reference to their study that they projected to the public in 2016.
Right.
I think it's time to find out what's going on with it.
Right.
In terms that the average person can understand.
Right, and they're working on a new one at the moment.
Well, then they should do something with the plan of 2016 before they progress with something else.
Okay, so I guess we're moving on. Ensure clean, safe drinking water for homes. Example is lead.
Well, I just, if that could be updated, ensure clean drinking, and search for grants and partnerships for financial help.
That wouldn't be part of an overall goal, that'd just be a subset of it, that's obviously part of the process. That'd be out of the discussion.
Next one is community recreation events, increase them.
No more rain in the weekends? Can we do that?
22 weekends in a row.
And then, I don't know, there's, I don't know what that screen thing is there, okay. Review the Mystic Resiliency Study Report.
They're coming back early.
All right, so then the, the next one is council committee representation equitable, equitable, I guess, equitable?
Which would probably be a rules committee thing, too.
Absolutely.
Would we like to send that to the rules committee?
Yes. Rules.
We just did it.
Did it already go to rules committee?
We just did it.
They already did, it's already been decided once.
Yeah.
No, it wasn't, it didn't have the support, it did not go to the rules.
Did it go to the rules?
No, no.
Oh, no, it didn't.
All right, so council committee representation equitable. Do you want to send that to the rules committee?
Yeah.
Yes.
It's got five.
The next one is holiday street decorations. Woo, woo! The next one is single referral rule. Does anybody want to send that to the rules committee? The next one is legal review of property reuse policy. The next one is open budget data portal.
Wait, hold on one second, how many did that one get? Only two?
Two.
Okay, thank you.
Open budget data portal.
I want to support that.
Can you give me, Council Burt, can you give me a quick synopsis of what that means?
Council McBride, since that was his...
That's my...
No, that was, the data portal was...
Bunker. Oh, it was Bunker. Basically, there, there's a service, it makes it, you know, right now you go and see a large PDF, it breaks it out into nice graphs, it's about, I looked at it, I can't remember, OpenGov, maybe it was the group, it's about 15, 20,000 to get it going, and about 5,000 to 10,000 each year to keep it going. Basically, it makes it easier to look up info.
Okay, thank you.
So let's vote on that, open budget data portal. Town manager succession planning.
What was that, just explain?
McBride, too?
Who's going to fill in, if something happens to Mr. Burt?
He got in an accident today.
Is there somebody that's ready to, like, are we grooming anybody? But then there's also the, the potential that you do a job search, don't you? I mean, like, you're going to send something out?
Yeah, you know, if something happens in the meantime, you know, there's a couple people, key people that would do everything, probably HR director and finance director.
I, I know it's Council McBride, but I just want to say, I view this as like, like the presidential line of succession, like, if anything were to ever happen to the president, like, if anything were ever to happen to the town manager. anything were to ever to happen to the town manager.
But we have that, right?
Well, it'd be really, I think it'd be if I was gone, not, like, anything else is still falling under.
Let's ask Council McBride. Let's ask Council McBride, he's here tonight. So, Council McBride, can you explain the succession planning or the town manager succession?
Yeah, I think everybody's kind of hitting the nail on the head. It's really just to have a plan in place in the event something to happen to the town manager, just for backup precautionary, so the government can keep on moving. Probably not, probably not a big ask, just saying. And I'm sure Town Manager Burt has some thoughts on this already. It's just to have a plan in place of something were to happen, you know, the old plan here, something happens, the town can keep on moving.
For example, if he was out for three months, is that what you're suggesting?
That would still fall under my purview. Any of that stuff would fall under my purview. We've talked about, you know, internally about that, but I could certainly give you, you know, that, that won't be something that council can weigh in. It's only if I actually left that the council would have authority.
Okay.
I have a question.
Council Boarderline.
All right. So I'm just trying to understand, so, like, when you applied last time and you were going to leave and then you didn't leave, is that the same kind of succession?
No, because you can't do anything on bond.
When you applied.
Well, if I, well, I mean, that doesn't, I mean, you're still only so much you can do at that point in time to take a job. You could, you know, you could have some preliminary discussions of process. Do you want to hire, you know, HR to run the process, or do you want an outside company to run the process? That's really.
Okay.
This is sort of like if you have a car crash.
Right. And that's pretty standard stuff. You know, so.
So if it was a standard, like, you wanted to, you wanted to apply in another town, like, last time, and then you decided to stay, that wouldn't be the same policy? We would just follow our normal policy?
Right.
If you saw another employment, you want to move?
Right.
Counsel Russ.
Nothing triggers the council until I give my resignation.
Counsel Russ?
Okay.
So there is a plan in place if something happens to you for the short term, which has nothing to do with us.
But I can write it out for you, yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. So town manager succession planning, we're voting on that now.
I feel like that's already done.
Yeah, sure.
There you go.
What did he just, wait, wait. He just said, we can't do it.
Oh, it's, all right.
Because it's going to be internal staff if something is decantated.
But we should talk about it.
What I would do is provide a plan to you.
All right. So there you go.
All right. Do that.
So voting on town manager succession planning, sorry about that. I guess that's okay? You got five? Nonprofit donations for community center.
What is that? We're going to look for nonprofit donations?
That was Council McBride's. McBride would, Council McBride, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, certainly. I'll make it brief. In a nutshell, we have these plans for the community center, but, you know, it's thirty, twenty, thirty, forty million dollars. And the thought was, can we start the ball rolling on either setting up a nonprofit to start soliciting donations from people throughout the town to help fund for the capital cost or even the operating cost once it's up and running? And I've spoken to Town Manager Burt about this, I think, a year ago. He said there may already be something set up, but it's somehow to get the ball rolling. It takes some time, a year or so, to get a nonprofit set up. It was just to kind of get the process moving, because, again, to fund a community center will be difficult to do. So it was just a thought that, you know, can we collect five, seven, ten million dollars from some, you know, some areas, various residents throughout the town?
Now, Council McBride, there's already an item on the list to make a decision on what's going to happen with the, firstly, before you would start doing that and collecting money, you have to have the plan. So it'd be a two-step process, or it could just fall under, okay, you know, we want to go this way, and here's what we're doing for trying to raise money.
The second question is, are we allowed to have nonprofits?
Yes.
The town can make it.
We have, like, the Parks and Rec, and all that kind of stuff, yeah.
Well, those two go, kind of go.
People make donations directed to the town, too. We could do, there's all kinds of things. It could be a separate, or, you know, foundation, it could be just us, it's, there's a lot of options there.
I mean, it could just be combined with the community center, because it's how you pay for the community center.
Okay. Voting on nonprofit donations for community center.
Point of clarification. Could we combine it? Like, I agree with Counselor Jones. If McBride is okay with that, what's the other item that we're combining it with would be come up with a plan for the community?
Community centers.
Because we have to come up with a plan for the community center, which has not been finalized. And then, once that's established, create fundraising for, would that, would that satisfy Council McBride's referral? I'm not sure. I just.
Yes, I'm comfortable with that.
He said yes.
Or just put, just put fundraising up to decision. I mean, we know what that means.
But I would like to say that, me personally, when it comes to the community center decision, there's decisions to be made, but then, if you're going to ask people to make donations, I don't know, I sort of have an issue with that. When you are a taxpayer in the community, and this is going to be a taxpayer-funded item. So asking for a nonprofit, people to donate towards it is a different situation. So I don't know if it should be separate.
It still comes in underneath that. It's just part of that whole discussion.
Point of information? Or had a chance to speak about it? I'm sorry.
Counsel Gieske.
The way, I understand your concerns, Mayor Franco. The way I am viewing it, though, is, for example, like, a college, when they, they take tuition dollars in, that's how they get their revenue. But then, sometimes, if they need something extra, they'll solicit donations, and sometimes, they get a big donation. It's like, the name of something is, like, for example, like, Community Room is named after so-and-so for, because they donated the money. So that is the way I'm viewing it. I just want to share that point.
I'm in favor of the Gieske Community Center.
Council Boarderline.
The way I view it is, and what I've seen in the past in other towns and with, like, how he used colleges, is first, we're going to come up with a plan, and we can support that, but the donation part would be, say that somebody in the town has no heirs to their will, and they have everything into a trust, which has happened. And that person, family, if they knew that we had this set up, they might be like, oh my God, my mom always wanted a pool and was a big contender of the community center. I got fifty thousand dollars in this trust. You know what? I'm going to donate twenty-five thousand. Some people in their will, if they know that we are seeking funding for a community center that they believe in, sometimes will, like, go home and update their will and add that they would like, they're part of their trust, to go to a community center. So it doesn't mean that we're kind of taking extra money from the taxpayers, but it lets them know that, hey, this is a big tax item, and sometimes, there are chances where someone from out of town or something passes. The library, for example, the Mystic Library, Mystic Knowing Library, they get a lot of money that's entrusted to them, if I'm understanding right. Town Manager Burt?
They're, but they're not a government.
Right. But I'm just saying that a lot of towns will take money if people want to entrust it to a good cause.
Understood.
Like recreation.
So we really can't debate here and go into the full, we're going into the full discussion, so.
No, no, I was just asking about combining it, and I think at the time.
If you want to combine it, go right ahead. Just go ahead, we'll have the discussion in the future, and that's fine. And we could have the five people supported it already, so we could just combine it.
And at the time we discuss it, we could choose to pull off the financial fundraising at that time.
Understood.
But there are people that might want to donate.
Karma fundraising.
Should I have the fundraising or?
Go ahead. All right. NIPs miniature liquor bottle funding, a potential buyback program.
What does that mean?
It is an idea of potentially having four buyback programs a year, and people can collect the bottles, bring them in, they could be weighed, and they get paid for them, just like as though you were bringing them back to the store and putting them in a machine. You'd weigh them, and they, the only criteria maybe is you have to be a Groton resident.
And what would be different?
And we would use the NIPs funding for them.
What would be different than the current NIP funding that we're getting now?
It is the same funding, it's how we use it.
How we collect it or how we use it?
You can't, you can't bring, you can't bring NIP bottles back to the liquor store. NIPs don't have a deposit. They don't have a deposit. So this is the way of creating a deposit program.
We receive a fee that's charged on the bottle. We receive the fee money, and then we're trying, the goal is to try and figure out, how do we get these NIPs off the ground? So a buyback program would solve the problem of people bringing, I mean, there are other issues that may pop up, but in one hand, if we could buy back the 1.2 million bottles of NIPs that are sold in Groton, you know what? That would be successful. Regardless, we basically accounted for the 1.2 that were sold in our community, and I was thinking that that could potentially be a goal, and of us trying to get those NIPs off the ground that so many people complain about.
Yeah.
So let's vote on NIPs miniature liquor bottle funding, buyback program. All righty. So I think we're now going to take, like, a 10-minute or so recess, so Mr. Burt could, oh, wait a minute, let's go back through the, yeah, let's go back through the committees, please.
Point of information. Can you read now that Counselor McBride's here or pass the paper to him, so he understands, like, what was proposed to us tonight that wasn't in the agenda?
So we went around, and we took a turn, and we kept reading out one thing that was a goal, so until we had, basically, we had none left, basically. And then, we went through each one, and we said, do you support this? And we raised our hands. And if we supported it, it has a circle next to it. So there was five supporters at least on that, okay? So then, the next set will be, Mr. Burt is going, we're going to go through now and look for committees. If any of these should be sent to committees. And then, now we're going to select, he's going to print these out, we're going to select what we think are our top 10. We're going to select 10 of them. We're then going to do the calculations and select the top 10 that will be for our council as our goals and priorities as a roadmap. The ones that remain, that still have five people that were supportive, will stay on the list, but they're not going to be in our top 10. So they can be pulled up. So if we take care of something in our top 10, we'll pull something from the bottom and make it one of the top 10, okay? So that was just sort of the roadmap we're doing, to have a direction.
So now, we're keeping them.
So now, we're going to look through this and.
Committees.
See what should go to committees. So let's look at this page, and I can only see the.
And some things like signage and stuff might be, all of a sudden, committee.
None of that.
I could do committee for.
John, are you able to blow that up a little bit? Are you able to blow it up just a little bit?
It's right on the screen next to it.
Yeah, it's still too small. That's great.
I can read them out loud, if you'd like, and we can just, as soon as somebody hears something, if somebody, I will read them.
That looks a little better, thank you. I can see it better.
I will read them, and if somebody, if after I read it, and somebody says committee, we will stop, and we'll just vote if somebody wants it to be on a committee, okay? So bring departments up to capacity. Board of Ed non-lapsing fund. Board of Ed Mystic parking. Plan for selling using town properties. Flooding and weather-related resiliency. Connecticut Veterans Services Director requirements.
Would that be appropriate for the Veterans Committee or not?
For which committee?
For what committee?
For the new Veterans House, you know.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't, because it's totally different. It's a totally different usage.
Permission on that? If that's required by the state, do we have to make it a goal? Shouldn't we just do it?
It's really tricky.
It's in depth.
It's really depth.
Counsel Jones and I have been working on this, and it's, there's a lot of variables to it, and it's, it's something that's going to come to the council, and we're going to have to make some very big decisions, but I think it's very important to do for our community. So I don't think that should go to a committee. I think it should be done here at the council myself, because there's a lot to it. Counsel McBride?
Yeah, can I just go back to bring departments up to capacity?
Making sure there's enough employees to do the work, essentially.
Is that a council? Is that a council decision, or is that administratively? I don't understand.
Well, I'd be, obviously, if I think there's a deficit we'd ask for in the budget, but sometimes, we do it as stepwise. It's, I think it's, it's involving wages, what things, why are people leaving, you know, all sorts of things involve for, do we have enough people? How do we keep the people?
So it's coming up with a retention recruitment plan?
Attention recruitment.
Sorry, thank you.
Counsel Pacino.
The ones that we already lined out, are those going to be eligible to maybe send to?
I will read them as well. I will read them.
Okay.
All right. The grant coordinator position. Stormwater authority. Outstanding priority list review.
What is that? All right, so should we take that one off? It's already.
It's already crossed off. Climate change emergency signage.
Public safety committee.
Evacuation. All right, let's vote. Do we want to send the climate change, emergency, signage, evacuation stuff to the safety committee? All right, that's going to be a committee item.
And just another.
Oh.
There you go.
I spent almost four hours playing with this. I know how to do it.
Thanks for having a day off.
That's what I thanked him for so much, because this is not, this is, this was some time put into this. Counsel Boarderline.
Just to the town manager, if you could just make sure that, when you send that email that I sent regarding the signage.
I forwarded it to the council.
Oh, you're reading it already?
Yep.
And then, it will go to the committee as well, for the safety committee, perfect?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Parks on the West Side. I will say, I think this might be in the Parks and Rec Committee. Don't they have their own committee?
Yes.
I think this is with them at the moment.
They don't have the same, they don't have the same resources the council has, of course, you know, the same, you have, you could tap into other things, but, yeah.
Right, but we were asking for the recommendation of, like, where should they go?
Right.
Do you see a need over there? Can you come with us with answers? That's basically, but, can, maybe we should, as a council, discuss it and send them a directive of what we're looking for, because I think it was sort of not quite a direct directive. Do you want to send it to committee? So let's vote. Do you want to send it to committee?
Yep.
Okay.
Parks and Rec.
Next one is affordable housing. STR registration process.
Madam Mayor, Counsel Boarderline.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Affordable housing, I guess whoever made that referral, which, you know, I'm all in support of affordable housing, what do you mean by affordable housing?
There's so many layers to that.
So just generic affordable housing? We're going to research.
I did it generic, because I think it's a priority, and a lot of things that, the different variables that go into this, that if things pop up, we should be definitely be bringing them forward as a priority.
Okay. So that one's moving, that one's circled, right?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And just to piggyback on that, that's, wasn't there a plan that you provided to us on affordable housing, rental assistance, and all that? That all is, it's all that?
Yeah, so if, if something comes up, it would be a priority that it makes it to our council meetings, you know? So if anything in affordable housing came up, it would definitely make a priority.
I guess my question is, is it, is it beyond just the housing? Because you presented, I forgot what it was, but a consultant report that had four or five different things, part of them were affordable housing, but there was also some other things in there, like rental assistance and all relating to housing. That's what this is.
Yes.
Okay.
So move that plan forward.
Mm-hmm.
Would that be the roster?
Or things of that nature.
A very good place to start, yeah.
It's, it's a very generalized, because there's so many things that I could entail that could come forward. It's one of those ones, I don't think affordable housing would fall off during our term if it got up there, simply because it would want, you would want to keep it there for all the different things that could potentially be coming forward. STR registration process. Street signage visibility.
Public safety.
I was going to say, public safety. Anybody want to send it to public safety?
Which one was this one? Which one was this one?
This was street signage visibility. Development, development expansion committee? That one I would, yes. That one I would like to go to.
Madam Mayor, could we just wait for Manager Burt to?
Yeah.
Update, sorry. Thank you.
All right, economic, I mean, I'm sorry, development expansion committee. And we had requested potentially that that go to economic development committee?
Yep.
So we can?
Was this a groundbreaking development, making a new committee?
No, we have that committee.
Yeah, but I think Counselor McBride, I'm not going to speak for you, but you want to tell exactly what you thought?
Yeah, I think it was just to focus on additional efforts at different development plans, whether it was the rail that's been talked about, whether it was more transit, buses, downtown Mystic. It was just to work on different development plans overall. Kind of catch-all of development.
Kind of like the affordable housing for housing?
Yes.
Okay.
Development for development.
But the things that you're asking that committee to take under, could that be also sent to economic development?
Yeah, that's right.
To maybe challenge them to take on that? Okay? So I would, all those in favor of sending that to the economic development? And also, do we need, Mr. Burt, you're okay to send that to EDC?
Mm-hmm.
No, John, you put a line through.
No, that's all right.
Nope. Oh, you've taken the lines off of the ones that?
Yeah, if you're referring, I'm.
You're going to do?
Because you oversee, you over, no, what I'm saying is, he oversees the EDC.
Right.
No, 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 he had taken the line out. I was just wondering if you just pick a line.
I know. So we need your okay to send that to the EDC, is that correct?
Yeah, it's fine.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, I appoint them, but you can certainly anytime send anything you want to the EDC.
I thought you, okay. Next is RFPs, look at mixed income housing as a goal.
I think Counselor McBride had his hand up that you made a mistake.
I'm sorry, Counselor McBride?
I just had a question, STR registration process. Is that just to look at short-term STRs in general? Because I just wonder if we want to say we're definitely doing registration process? Is that what?
I don't think so.
So it's really just to look at short-term rentals?
In general, yeah. I don't think it's definitely saying that.
Does it?
Until it gets to us and we have a discussion, we just aren't sure which direction it's going to actually go.
Thanks.
You want to change like STR?
Review or something?
Review.
Review, yeah. Yeah, yeah. That was mine, so yeah, you could do STR review.
Yeah, I had on mine, short-term rental process.
Yeah. Yeah, just.
I just had STR.
STR. And just take out registration and just take a review.
STR process. Process is fine.
Just out of registration.
Yeah, just take out registration. Because we may look at other stuff.
All right, where were we?
Economic development.
RFP, look at mixed income housing as a goal. ATV ordinance.
Committee.
That?
Public safety.
Okay, so all in favor of sending an ATV ordinance to public safety?
To public, oh, we're sending public.
Economic development.
Give me a minute.
Oh, he's got it down now.
Well, you go.
He's getting his steps in.
Yeah.
All right, economic development promotion for downtown Groton.
I think I can go to EDC.
EDC.
EDC? Anybody in favor of EDC?
EDC.
This actually helps our list a lot because it's down.
Yeah. And then Sutton Park completion, community center discussion fundraising.
Didn't we move that up?
Yeah, we moved that up.
Oh, yeah.
Take it out.
No, we didn't. We moved something below it, up to it.
We added fundraising to it.
Oh, you're right.
We added fundraising, nope, nope, you're right, John, leave it there. Leave it there, leave it there.
Sorry.
Community center discussion fundraising, knowing infrastructure, water quality, shellfish industry, long-term consolidated cash flow model, Board of Ed, Parks and Rec agreement for use of fields. I would like to send that to the athletic fields task force.
Okay.
Point of information, going back to Gieske's thing about the shellfish, should we send that to the Shellfish Commission? Can we, can we send something to Shellfish and ask them if there is a plan of infrastructure for the next year for the beds and ongoing? As just a council question?
I don't, to be honest with you, I don't think, I think it's just watch a Shellfish Commission meeting at this point. I believe they're working on it, if I'm not mistaken, correct.
So then, I was just trying to help.
Are you?
You think you're good with it?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right. If you think they're doing it, that's great.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, where are we?
Board of Ed, Park and Rec Agreement for Use of Fields, we said to send to the?
All right, so you're putting that, you're updating it?
Mm-hmm.
Two-hour delay tomorrow, I just got an alert.
Wonder how the roads are. How are the roads, Mr. McBride?
They seem fine.
Yeah?
Good, thank you.
Our crack.
Did you put on Long Hill?
Got it under control.
All right, let me know when you're ready.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
And this is where we start with the council stuff.
Athletic fields, oh, yeah.
All right, ready?
Yep.
You're going to move the page a little bit down? I think you went too far.
Did I?
I think everything after that we?
Finalized fire, I know, but I'm just kidding. All right, there we go. Finalized fire training facility was already sent to committee, bridges and culverts review, town open space review goals, solar array at transfer station, stream, you know what? The solar array at the transfer station, that's just going to come to us and it's going to be the?
I already have a schedule for two meetings from now.
And that's going to be about contractual, is that?
Yeah, yeah, it's out for, you know, the RFP's been released and all that, so.
Okay.
Do we want to even keep it on our list?
You're right.
Pick it up, yeah.
I think it's already moving, it's moving.
I, I put, I put it there just to like, hey, you know, let's finish this, like.
Right, but you know what? If we put it on our list and it makes the top 10, and then we get rid of?
Then you've achieved one.
We've achieved something on our top. So we are tracking these things.
If it's lower, we just delete it afterwards.
Right.
If one of those falls off, then can we move something up?
Yes, absolutely. But we are tracking achievements also at the same time, you know, so. So I think we should potentially leave it there. Streaming of council rules for efficiency, that's going to the Rules Committee. Planet Conservation Development Process update, ensure clean, safe drinking water for homes regarding the lead. Community recreation events, let's increase those.
Is there a committee we could send that to?
Is there a committee?
Parks and Rec Commission.
Parks and Rec, but ultimately, you know, with staff, it's a discussion and then I'd have to then see where I could do with staff.
Okay, all right.
I have a question about the lead drinking, the one that I put in for the drinking.
Mm-hmm.
Could that go to, I mean, it's public safety, also look at, you know, like something that can discuss and see if there's grants and things and then bring it back to the council?
I think that's going to be a pretty broad issue though.
So leave it where it is then? Okay.
It's like a health issue.
It is a big health issue. But there's just, I was just looking at, we're not going to go in and change these. I was just looking at ways that we could partner with the state, other towns have, to help people afford to replace their pipes for?
Yeah, I was just thinking, how could we, is there a committee that we have that works with like Ledge Light Health District even? That might be able to work with them and possibly getting grants? Is there, there's no committee that we have?
Would it fall under the purview of our environmental person we hired as well?
Oh, what about?
Because she could seek grants for other, I mean?
Well, if this was on your goals, that's where we're going to start, is having research and.
Okay. Okay, all right.
That's where we go.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're going to continue. Review Mystic Resiliency Study Report.
Do we have a?
No. Community, council committee representation equitable. That's going to rules. Holiday street decorations.
Beautification? That was my vision, was that.
All right, then, let's vote. Do we want to send holiday decorations to beautification?
Because they have the funding, we can use funding.
And we can give them funding if they don't.
And if I'm not?
And I was planning on putting a CIP for some decorations, which they could end up choosing with that money, but I was already looking, I was, I had that on my to-do list, so.
Yes.
I believe, like, if my understanding, like, New London has a group or committee that does their, that needs to be perfect because a lot of those towns do have the wreaths and the lanterns and the candles and so.
I would create a spot to put the money, you know, approval for money and then they would look at what should be done.
Yeah, they can come up with the ideas and all that other stuff and make me bring us a presentation.
Make our town hall.
So, put down beautification committee for holidays, street decorations.
Didn't we have decorations at one point?
There used to be a wreath on the building a long time ago, but it's long since gone.
Who pays for the ones in downtown Mystic?
Not since, not the seven years I've been here, we've never had any.
Chamber and the merchants, the merchants and the chamber pay for the decorations.
Yeah.
And then New London, I believe, has a?
City Center District.
Yes, so we could use our beautification committee, which we do send money from the town to that could enhance the down.
Well, they spend through ICS. Yeah, go ahead.
All right.
Rules Committee?
Single referral rule, do we want to send that to the rules? We already voted on it, but single rule, do we want to have the single referral rule sent to the rules committee?
I would like that, just so that it's easier to get a referral through if needed.
All right, the next one is legal review of property reuse policy. Open budget, what committee would you like to send that to?
Now, there is the TOPE Committee, right? That we have now?
No, that's, that's?
Yeah, I'm the TOPE Committee. Though, for what we would do.
Well.
Really be a council thing.
All right, so.
Open budget data portal. Counselor Bordelon?
We're just reading, I'm sorry, I was voting again.
Nope, these are for, these are for, for sending it to committee. Town manager succession planning.
We'll just report back, yeah.
Yeah, and then NIP miniature liquor bottle funding buyback program. I was thinking the beautification.
The only thing is, this will be extensive.
Yeah.
You know, staff work, so, I mean, they could do a beginning, a little bit of early stuff on it.
How about resiliency?
I was also thinking that if, that maybe we could partner with them, is maybe, maybe not so much send it to them, but partner with them because maybe, they don't have a lot of people that could come, but they could help get the word out on social media and other things of that nature. But I'm just going to leave it as it is right now without.
Would it also be in combination with our resiliency, helping us, because that is a recycling environmental issue, is cleaning up waste? And it would make a way that she can look, you know, because there's maybe extensive research into that.
I don't see it in that committee though.
I think she's got her hands full.
She's not that committee.
Well, where would it, who would handle that if beautification didn't do it?
We would.
We would.
Yeah, staff would do legwork and report to the council.
But at some point, we could partner with beautification to do a lot of the?
They could do some legwork.
Yeah. All right, I think we're through the list.
I need a few-minute break too.
And we'll take?
A bit of a process to print it out.
For consistency, you might want to put a star before the holiday street decorations.
So we were at 8:57 and we're going to be taking, how long do you think you need?
Let's do 10, just in case.
We're going to take a 10-minute break at 8:57.
10?
Thank you.
10 whole minutes.
Yeah, I know, I'm going. Yeah, I know.
It is 9:12. And what we are going to do now is select your top 10 items that you find to be your top priorities. And we'll work on that right now.
And that should not include those that have been referred to committee?
Yeah. And do not include anything that's going to committee.
So how many are here that are not going to committee?
Seventeen.
And how many do we need? Top 10?
Top 10.
Yes, or your preferred, your 10 most important to you.
And then the other seven are going on a hold list?
On the other list.
Yeah. Is the plan for selling and use of town properties, is that just the TOPE stuff, the P-O-C-D thing? Is that the same thing? Or is this different?
Well, we have a policy and we'll be bringing things to you, so I'm not quite sure what the next, you know, you'll look at --
Can I speak to this, since it was mine?
My point of this is, we need to move these forward and get it, make a decision as to
what we're doing.
Engage, get it going.
Yes, get it moving.
What are we talking about?
Plan for selling and use of town properties.
Kick it up, kick it up a notch.
I never finish first on tests.
I guess I have a question about Sutton Park completion. Are we worried that it won't get completed or didn't we already vote on all that?
Not the next stages, you know, like the playground and some of that.
So when they're saying completed, the other things that we didn't vote on?
Oh, whole plan.
Yeah, that's, but we don't know, in this term, that we'd be voting on that money? Is that what, that's what I'm asking? Who put that one? I just had a quick question.
I have complete Sutton Park and my thought was --
You want to complete that in this term?
Let's try and see what we can do in the next steps and if we could CIP it or how, all the different options that might be on a table for how we can finish that up. Are we going to take a break and, should we take a break and count them? Or are we just going to --
Well, I could, there's only like 17. I could just say, how many of you have that on your preferred list? I put a number down.
All right.
Either way, or I could take them and count them. It might be, I mean, it might be a little smoother.
For which way?
If you just hand them to me, we take a quick break and I just tally.
Okay.
Either way.
I need one more. Score up papers.
Sorry, that's incorrect.
You want my ticket?
It was just the original.
Wow. Are we, are we going to get this back or are we just --
Are we going to get these back?
If you put your name on, I --
Okay. I got my name on mine.
Don't put your name on, you don't get credit for your work.
And if you see this, and the second page has just the clean version.
I'll get it.
David cheated off of it.
What if you want to vote for one of yours twice and use your 10 votes? Well, because I don't, no, but I --
You get one vote per item.
I have 10.
Is that it?
I should be able to use how I want.
Because I moved to a committee.
Rachel, I could use two, I could vote twice on one.
I didn't quote.
Yeah, why not? I have 10 votes. If I, because I might not, I don't have 10 years that I like.
You can have two votes on one item.
Huh?
That would ruin the process to have multiple votes on one item.
How would that, I have 10 votes?
Each council, doesn't matter, in this type of process, each council gets one vote per item.
But who's making the decision? You or we are?
I mean, you are, but it'd be not a good process to do differently, so.
I mean, I don't know what to change. You have 10 votes to use, how you want to use it.
All right, so then, Counselor Jones, hurry up so we can vote on something. So we can make a decision. A consensus decision on it.
I'm just --
We'll ask the whole council and we'll decide. And then we'll have an answer. All right, so while we're here together, Counsel Boardland is asking, can she vote more than once on an item?
But I couldn't vote no more than 10 times.
So are we going to allow people to vote more than once on an item? If you are in favor of voting more than once on an item, raise your hand.
Or just omit, just stop or run out.
So. We are still, just to let you know, we are still live. I'm just reminding you in case you forgot.
It's getting a little punchy.
I saw you reach for it.
Counselor Merritt, are you, you're finished?
I'm still stuck on two items.
Okay.
Can we choose committee items or not?
No.
Just circled items.
Just the circled items, yes. Without the star.
Am I going to take a break for a minute?
Yeah.
Just going to take a little bit to write.
All right, so we'll take like a, I don't know, I guess a 10-minute break and we'll come back at 9:29 and we will have our results then. We expected, but we have some calculations that Mr. Burt is now going to be placing on the board that shows our top 10 priorities for the --
I was going to, since we're keeping them all, I was just going to, first of all, what member needs?
I'm sorry, say that again. I can't hear you.
Since we're keeping them all, I was going to first just say how many, how many each received.
Just point of information, just for full transparency, because we're making decisions and stuff as a council, I think you have to project what everybody, like, chose, wouldn't you? Because people at home can't see that.
The workshops, you don't have to, but that's fine.
You don't have to, okay. So you're just going to submit the original worksheet in the minutes?
I can read who did each one.
I don't know. I just, I just think that --
I don't.
You don't have to. If you don't think it's required, it's fine.
So I would prefer just the top 10.
Okay, let me.
If that's possible. And then if we could get a copy of your list of the ones that --
Emailed to us or whatever?
That you showed where the remaining were on the list.
There'll be some ties and there'll be, there's going to be multiple things that would be the 10th because of a tie.
All right, well, let's go. Let's see what they are.
All right. First of all, we have two that got, it's okay if I just sit here.
Sure.
We have two that received seven votes. That was the plan for selling town property and the veteran services.
So how many? I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Seven on each of those. So for plan for selling town properties and the Connecticut Veteran Services Director requirements, seven on each of those.
Okay.
For the downtown Mystic parking, we have actually four with six votes. So first one, no necessary order, four with six votes. Downtown Mystic parking, Sutton Park.
Where's --
Community recreational events. And NIPS.
Very nice.
And then we have three with five votes. We have affordable housing, STR process, and the solar array, or hold on a second here, the town open space, town open space review goals, sorry.
I'm sorry, which one was that?
It's the town open space review goals. And then we, so that's --
That's 10.
Is that 10 or nine?
That's nine.
That's nine.
And so then we have several with four.
How many?
Four with four.
Only three extra.
So do we want to add the four or do we want to pick out of the four which one to add to the 10?
No, I think we add the three. I think that's, just put them, well, there's four with four. Only one of them is the 10th one. Just make it 13 instead of 10.
Do we want to, do we want 10 or do we want to have a total of 13?
13's fine.
Point of information.
So let's go down, let's just say what your preference is.
13 is fine.
13's fine.
13's fine.
13's fine.
I mean, if we're going to go 13 and there was only 17, what's really the difference?
Counselor Merritt, how many?
Put them all forward.
Okay, so let's, we'll go with a 13. Thank you.
Okay. So the ones with four include the grant coordinator position, community center decision of, sort of closer up, flooding and weather-related resiliency.
Where's that one?
Up towards the top. And then solar array.
Solar what?
The solar array at transfer station.
Oh, I thought that was --
Point of information on that one, that one's already moving and, I mean, I think it's a wasted space with something else that could go in.
And something else will go in once we finish it. Once we cross it out, something else will slide in.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I have 13. We have 13. All right.
Do you want to know what the other few?
Sure.
What's our, departments, bring departments up to capacity, one. Board of Ed non-lapsing fund, three. Stormwater --
I'm sorry, what did you say the other one was? There was department bringing --
The very first item, bring departments to capacity, that's one.
Yep.
Board of Ed non-lapsing fund, that's three.
Mm-hmm.
We have one for stormwater, which wasn't eligible, but we have one. Let's see. Bridges and culverts review, there's three.
Bridges and culverts.
Ensure clean, safe --
Bridges and culverts are like sort of --
You're going to give us this paper, right?
Oh, bridges, right. So what was that? Bridges and culverts were three?
Three.
Mm-hmm.
Ensure clean, safe drinking water for homes, two.
Where is that? Okay.
I think that's it.
Town manager succession plan, did I get any votes?
Um, no.
All right.
And we'll get that, you'll email that? Is that how you're sending it?
Did you have that on your stand for your top 10?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so I'm sure.
I just had it on my list.
Right. Now it'll stay on, like, even if it didn't get a vote, if it's circled, it stays on there. It's just going to be the lowest thing.
Yep.
All right.
How are you sending that to us?
I'll email it tomorrow.
The copy of that list that you have?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All right. So it's 9:53 and we are adjourned. Everybody drive safe.